Good afternoon. We're ready to get started. This is a meeting of the council committee of the whole. Today is May 21st, 2024. First up on our agenda is consideration of the minutes from the March 19th, 2024 meeting and April 16th, 2024 meeting.
I move for approval.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved. Next up, our council administrator's report is going to be given today by Deputy Director Jeff McDaniels. Mr. McDaniels.
President O'Quinn, members of the council, before you, you have the itemized list of items. But in my report, I'll give the details for each, for each, excuse me. As it relates to the departmental budget, as we continue to work with the administration to facilitate the end of your transactions, we are anticipating an ending departmental account balance of approximately 200,000. And we would like to enlist the council's support towards transferring the ending account balance to our capital projects account. Specifically, the capital projects account is where the funding will reside to accommodate our ongoing improvements within the council chambers, conference room A and the ante room. In addition, we are exploring the removal of the file cabinets in the workspace just north of conference room A to provide some seating for central and district office staff. The G. Courtney French Broadcasting Agreement for an amount not to exceed $25,000 before the council, before, excuse me, Budget and Finance Committee on May 28th and the city council on June 4th. District budgets, councilors, there's not much that we can say about each respective transaction. If any that we can share, that would be considered new information to you. However, there are two points we would like to make at this time. One, some of your district account balances that you envision being transferred to your capital projects account. We are preparing to request all applicable transfers during the June 10th Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Jackson. Number two, there are at least two councilors who may be a little behind on programming their opera funding. Please be reminded that the funding obligation deadline is December 31st, 2024. And the expenditure deadline is December 31st, 2026. The point of contact is Chris Hatcher, of course. And I believe that he has circulated a communication seeking additional face time with some of you. As it relates to job descriptions, staff office and concerns, I think President O'Quinn asked Mrs. Kidd to provide councilors with job descriptions. So before you, councilors, you should have a memorandum from Mrs. Kidd in addition to each job description for each central staff employee. Departmental concerns, we have an interior designer who is working with us to complete the software renovations within the council chambers. The renovations include, but are not limited to, the seating cushions inside of the security area, window treatments, wood finishing or touch-up painting, door hardware, and the reupholstery or replacing of the fabric behind the city seal. As quotes and our new information about this respective vendor is received, that information will be shared with the council's leadership. I do want to say, I believe you should have at least one quote before you for window treatments. Let's see.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. McDaniels.
Sure.
When, where are we putting window treatments?
These windows over here.
They haven't been here since the inception of this building, but we feel the need to spend money putting window treatments up. This is, well, anyway, I'm sorry, you're getting the middle report.
Thank you, counselor. For at least one week, some of the council chamber microphones were inoperable. But as of this past Friday, the vendor has restored all of the microphones. Employee benefits, open enrollment. If you have not met with the benefits coordinator to date, or you do not have an appointment scheduled before May 23rd, please extend an opportunity to meet with the benefits coordinator on May 23rd at the Central Library. In addition, if you miss this opportunity to meet with them face-to-face, an opportunity will be extended by telephone between May 28th and May 21st. Constituent complaints and concerns, we have none noted for the record. Item six, the 2024 Alabama Legislative Session, for the 2024 regular legislative session, excuse me, 495 bills were introduced in the House, 349 in the Senate. To date, Governor Ivey has signed 340 bills. There are an additional 118. And those bills will probably become acts without her signature. There is a list of all bills that have been enacted by the legislature available at the Secretary of State's website. It was not in a, in a format that we could readily provide it to you for summary. But we did extract some deals that we thought would either have your interest and/or be of some use to you. One, that you may or may not have been aware of, Act Number 2024, 194. You have that act in front of you. It was sponsored by Senator Wagner. Effective January 1st, 2025, all elected mayors and members of governing bodies will be required to enroll in 10 credit hours of training and development. The full, the full intent of the bill, again, is, is before you at your seat at the dais. Another one, the one we most commonly refer to as Senate Bill 9, is now Act 24, dash 246, sponsored by Senator Coleman Madison. That allows Birmingham, in essence, to enforce state regulations on unpaid liens and to recover those fines as necessary. Act 2024, 278, sponsored by Senator Orr, and is the revision to public records compliance. Quick list of council travel and events and invitations. The Alabama League of Municipalities Convention was May 15th through the 18th in Huntsville. Of course, we had four representatives from the council who were present there. We want to recognize Counselor Smithman for retaining her position as Vice Chair of Finance Administration and Governmental Relations. The groundbreaking ceremony for the Birmingham Amphitheater has not been rescheduled to date. But Kim Garner is our point of contact, and what information is provided to her, of course, she'll push it out to the council. The NLC, National League of Cities Centennial Road Show is underway, and they are asking members to join them in one or more of the 100 cities, towns, and villages for the road show stops. The closest stop to us, or stops, I should say, to us, will be on June 1st in the city of Wautumpka. That stop begins at City Hall at 8:00 a.m., and then the city of Montgomery at 11:00 a.m. If you have not received, it has been sent to central staff. Creed 63, which is a bowl recipient, this is their third year anniversary. And they will be celebrating their third year anniversary on June 12th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The address has been provided and the location. And that information will be forwarded to you in the, in the event that you don't have it. The Economic Development Academy, due to Major League Baseball, we had to reschedule that third cohort meeting date from June 20th, a date to be determined. I guess up until this point, we know at least the first week of July, most of you will not be available. So we're looking at a date of the latter part of July. So if you will, as you receive that communication, please confirm your date as soon as you can. The Summer NLC Board and Leadership Meetings, those dates are June 10th through the 13th in Rancho Cordova, California. If our four councilors have been slow to submit their travel, please do so as soon as possible. Please be reminded that attendance and participation is one of several conditions for your service during your term on the board or on an advocacy committee. Again, this is a repeat from last month, but the Business Council of Alabama's 2024 Governmental Affairs Conference is scheduled for August 9th through the 11th in Point Clear. Lodging is still available for those who are interested in registering and attending at this time. Mr. President, that concludes the administrator's report. Are there any questions?
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, starting at the beginning of the report, Mr. McDaniels, is, I see that we have an administrative assistant position open. Who would that person report to?
Bear with me a second. If I can just speak to and maybe not follow the job descriptions, there's a vacancy that currently exists from Mrs. Lamford's retirement.
Okay, so was that, so that's, that job title might not have aligned exactly with what she did. But that's what my concern was, is that her role here would be fulfilled by somebody else.
I think that's fair. Yes, sir.
And then I think that just an administrative assistant. Well, anyway. Next.
Counsel Williams. So there has been some discussion about, amongst leadership, about potentially taking this vacancy and utilizing it differently going forward.
And, and whose leadership?
President Protim, the administrator, and deputy administrator. So in our, amongst the council, we have had a conversation about having more legislative expertise and/or financial analysis expertise as sort of specialist positions within central staff. So nothing's been decided at this point. But just making you aware that the, the position is still open, you know, and there's currently not being advertised. But it's something that the, the council needs to have some discussion around and decide. There's some issue that needs to be cleared up about our staff's ability to see city financials in New World and the other systems that the city uses. So, but as it is, my understanding is that Ms. Kidd and Jeff have limited visibility on expenditures outside of our department. And if that's going to be the case for any council office staff, then it, it limits the usefulness of a financial analyst position. So, given the information, you know, that we have before us, there's, you know, some inclination that legislative analysts may be more useful to us. But again, this is something that the council needs, you know, contemplate and provide leadership with direction on.
Okay, so when we say that the position we have open is administrative assistant, then that's not correct. And I, of course, haven't been any, I'm just a lowly council member, so I haven't been in any of these leadership discussions. But I would love to see us have a financial analyst or a legislative analyst, which is why I'm asking why we're advertising for an administrative.
We're not, we're not advertising at all. The, the position just opened. That's, and this is what the description is currently. So it's not being advertised. There, there are two positions that are being advertised. And those are the assistant, public information officer, and videographer position.
Okay.
Those two are actively being advertised, and we're trying to figure out.
And when, as we, as a council, will be discussing this?
Usually, you know, so in our structure sessions, I mean, we can, you know, have it in whatever context the council wants, you know, it can be in the committee of the whole. But it's also something that we could handle in our, our structure sessions. It's not, you know, an item that needs to come before the council in an, an agenda, you know, and be voted on. So, you know, it's an internal discussion.
I agree. I look forward to having it. Will you please let us know when that's going to be in the structure session so that I know when to attend?
For, I haven't announced this yet, but didn't have a plan.
Counsel President.
I got you, Jeff. So there's not one currently on the calendar, but we'll let you know.
All right. And then this moving of the $200,000 to finish, I guess, or further decorate this room. So help me understand this, because I think that this is absolutely asinine and insane. How much money, Mr. McDaniels, did we spend to, I guess, put new ceiling tiles and chairs into this room? Let me rephrase that. How much was the renovation of the chambers? In round numbers.
Counsel Williams, the renovations to include the replacement of the audio equipment is probably decades removed. Our challenges were, were complicated by years of layering temporary fixes to permanent solutions that the council needed, specifically about its ability to have quality videos, quality audio, et cetera. So as it relates to this room being handicap accessible and having some of the modern tools that people like to see when they walk into rooms, by the time we actually moved towards the renovations, we were at $400,000.
$400,000. And I do see the handicap accessibility, as you see, the seat next to Mr. Sullivan is no longer there, which is, is great.
So just.
$400,000. No, I'm in the, so I want to understand why we would spend an additional 200. I, I cannot believe the idea of us spending this much money and then talking about putting drapes up and, or curtains, or whatever we call it, at the taxpayer's expense.
So just for point of clarification, this is a suggestion from council administration. This has not been something that, you know, the council has approved, moving this money, you know, for this purpose.
Yeah, understood. I, I mean, obviously, this is one of those leadership conversations. But I would like to voice my strong opposition of continuously, I, I can't believe that we didn't get this done with $400,000. I don't get, I mean, we slapped some paint around, we got new AV equipment, which is expensive, actually. But new drapes in here and continuing to spend that $200,000, it seems like that that should be a capital project that we talk about with the budget surplus, quite frankly, and not the small budget that the city council receives. But that's just my opinion.
Counsel Woods.
Yeah, I just want to add a little context to the, the chamber renovations. Kind of during that period, I was over Public Information Committee. And a large driver of that project was the lighting. It had to be replaced, all of your audio, as well as your video. We stream basically live on social media, but we provide that video to some other sources. And kind of once we moved up the aboutwell, that equipment in the weeks kind of preceding that had stopped working, so we weren't able to really stream. And I needed an upgrade, but we had a line chair that cost was electronics, audio, video, your sound, your video, did the chairs, ceiling tiles. But, and then there was some conversation where we left off, kind of before I handed it off. But the conference room A, kind of upgrading that the same way, so we have that same capability. But I'd be okay if we didn't do window treatments, but I'd be, probably be happy if we did them, so either way. What color are they going to be first?
Actually have a, a question about the, the window treatments, too. So this is actually the first time that I've seen this invoice. This is, looks like just a quote for the equipment. It's, and doesn't include installations. Is that correct? And how would this work with the, I mean, you may not know, but this is just a, a question. How would this work? I mean, are these shades that would be installed on the interior of the windows? Because there's obviously already blinds that are built into the windows. So it would be another layer on, yeah, okay.
So, so, Mr. President, I would maybe like to, you know, forego being able to answer the document that is in front of you and at least pick up where Mrs. Kidd left off in the exchange yesterday. I think she expressed maybe some level of difficulty of receiving information and timely information from the interior designer. But from a standpoint of what I know that has been discussed, the original idea that was discussed was window wraps, which would be less expensive and require less maintenance. I'm not for sure what happened originally to the, to the window wraps. But it would be less invasive, less costly. But I don't know if it's because of the partners she was working with or the rarity of people in that space, maybe whom, whom she had reached out to. But there was some initial conversation around that. So the new proposal is, I guess, the shift from what was discussed originally, and those were window wraps. And that's sort of like, you know, marketing cards for businesses that you see with a wrap. Our windows would have something that was civil and in good taste. I think there are some other municipalities who have wraps that they use. So it wasn't something that we were going to just be an anomaly in that space. But we were going to, to do some things that parallel with some other cities had done with their renovations. But I, I can't speak to what happened to it.
Okay. So this $20,000 quote is not for the wraps. This is for curtains?
And seat cushions.
Wait, seat cushions, in the first administrative report that we got, the, the report stated that seat cushions had been ordered.
Yeah, I think that maybe the reference to seat cushions being ordered was a temporary solution that was provided by the administration. And those are the cushions that are there now. But they're not the, the fitted cushions that were originally there.
Oh, I hate how good my memory is on this. But since y'all had specifically called out my sweet India for not liking to sit on the, the nails back there, it was said actually in two separate updates that, that, that our council administrator had ordered the cushions. And then Chaz said, "I'm so tired of hearing about the cushions during this legislative update. I'll just Amazon some to the city hall." I believe correctly, yeah. So, so now we're ordering that with this invoice?
I think this is a quote, not an invoice, right.
I'm just confused because of the two first updates that stated that there was, that they had been ordered. But anyway.
Counsel Abbott.
What is a fabric tract wall panel? And which lower walls are we talking about?
I believe Counselor Abbott, that's referring to those fabric wall coverings on the, the sides there and behind the monitors.
What's wrong with the ones we have? I was just curious, because I'm kind of in a, in the similar boat with, with Counsel Williams that the biggest problem we had in here was our sound system, and we got a new one. And despite the fact that it was out of order last week, it's a really good one. And, you know, I'm ready to stop spending money on, you know, I have an undergraduate degree in interior design. So if anybody would want to fluff it up, I mean, I'm wearing purple today. I just don't have a hat on. So, with a feather in it. Anyway, I, you know, I mean, I'm ready to stop. We don't have any problems with our windows. There's no light shining in, burning us up, or fading our new seat cushions. And so, you know, we could stop spending money.
So Counselor Abbott, just for what it's worth, I've communicated to Administrator Kidd that, you know, for the large majority of the, the council, that, you know, the concern was the lighting and the AV equipment. And so that need has obviously been met. And I think there's a greater desire to address conference room A. So I've encouraged Administrator Kidd to close out the chamber renovation projects, project, and, and concentrate on conference room A. So just offering that for perspective. Counsel Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. If for some reason we did continue, we'll be able to get a sample of those wall panels and, and drapes ahead of time, if possible.
I don't think it will need that, but.
Just in case, you never know. You might, you might see a fabric heel.
Counsel Smithman.
I hate to keep talking, let me not say hate. I strongly dislike to keep talking about these cushions. But when are we actually going to get them, since it's just a quote?
I think Deputy Administrator McDaniels indicated that there's been some, a lack of communication from the, this Cox Commercial Interiors. So, yeah. I think we tried to follow up on that and haven't received communication back from them. So that's been the issue.
Do we think this will be the last cost that we'll have to do for this?
I can't necessarily speak to the last cost, but I think on the back of what President O'Quinn said, I think one of the priorities, and, and I want to say this in favor of maybe what's important to the council, conference room A would be the destination for a lot of your media interfacing. Currently, you do that in a hallway. I'm, I'm not out there often, but from what I'm able to see, it is not without interruption or some challenges, either based on noise or interaction with people who are standing around. So the intent was to make conference room A more accommodating, not only for it being a media space designated for you, but also a conference room space. Oftentimes, as it relates to conference rooms C, D, and E, and they've been amenable. But the mayor's office essentially controls the utilization of those rooms. So if, you know, the administration is using those offices, I mean, excuse me, those conference rooms, it presents a problem for you. But a standard room that we use on a regular basis, whether we're talking to prospective vendors or, or otherwise, we use conference room A. And I think even to the extent of executive session. So it's just more accommodating for your needs.
Gotcha. Okay.
One other issue in the report I wanted to follow up on is, as Mr. McDaniels mentioned, the NLC Board and Leadership Summer Meeting is next, or, or the week of June 10th through the 13th. Myself, Protim Alexander, Counselor Smithman, Counselor Tate are all in those, in leadership positions with NLC. So technically, that leaves five councilors that would still potentially be available that week. If your schedule allows, you could, what I'm saying is. If your schedule allows, you could, what I'm saying is there could potentially still be a council meeting that week if there's a quorum available to attend. But there will be, potentially be four of us out of town that week. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
In situations such as that, who would, I guess?
The council would have to designate who the would preside over the meeting.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Most senior.
Any other questions, concerns related to the report?
I just want to thank Chaz for paying out of pocket for these cushions. Because that was actually very generous of him while we were strung along for so long, saying that they had been ordered. So, thank you, Chaz. I know you're listening.
Okay. All right. If there are no additional questions, we'll move on to our next agenda item. This is, we have Superintendent Mark Sullivan with Birmingham City Schools here to talk about the mental health program and overview. And let me just read the submission for this meeting. A resolution pursuant to subsection eleven dash forty dash one and subsection sixteen eleven dash nine point one codes of Alabama nineteen seventy-five authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Birmingham Board of Education in an amount not to exceed eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to provide the following goods and services for the benefit of students at the Birmingham City Schools. The board will provide assistance to create Birmingham City School System Board, that system, Birmingham City School System School-Based Mental Health Services Program that will provide mental health support on every Birmingham City School System campus selected by the Birmingham Board of Education. This allocation is exclusively for the purposes stated. Said funds shall be paid from account number zero 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 one underscore four zero zero underscore nine six two zero zero underscore nine six two one four point five five zero dash zero zero three. All right. Superintendent Sullivan. So we asked you here today to, so that you could give us an overview of the past year of the program and some of the impact that it's had.
So thank you, Mr. President. These mics do work though. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the members of City Council. We are delighted in Birmingham City Schools to have an opportunity to partner with the city to address some of the mental health issues that our students are facing. You know, oftentimes when people talk about mental health issues, they think that they're, they're talking about a student who may be throwing chairs across the room. But that's not what we're seeing. What we're seeing is kids who have anxiety, who have self-harming behaviors, suicidal ideations. And so one of the things that we decided to do with this, with this, with these funds is to ensure, one, that every school had a full-time counselor so that they can identify those areas where students are having issues. And then try, then recommend those individual students to other agencies or agencies within the school district. So I have with me our CSFO, who is Mrs. Glover, to talk about how the funds were being used. I also have with us our counseling supervisor, which is Dr. Lewis, to talk about how counselors play a role in that. And then I have our interim student support director, Dr. Bigum, to talk about the impact that that has had on individual students. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Glover, or is, she's, Dr. Lewis, I'm sorry, to talk about counseling.
Good afternoon. So in Birmingham City Schools, I'll proceed with the next slide. Okay. The city of Birmingham gave us one million dollars. Okay, for mental health services. And so through the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, those funds were spent on all of the schools that were provided a point five counselor. Meaning a counselor, one person, was shared with two different schools. So with the use of those funds in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we were able to provide a school counselor at each individual school to address the mental health needs and all of the things that counselors deal with on a day-to-day basis with students. In addition to that, forty-one thousand dollars of the funds were spent to assist faculty, staff with wraparound services as it relates to our employee assistance program. And then we provided MANT training to individuals at schools for seventy-four thousand dollars. And at this time, I'll turn it over to.
MANT training provides staff the communication, relational, and mental health technical skills to intervene with students early. So our main goal with MANT was to intervene early, identify when a student is having a crisis, to safely support them and get them back to an expected state. We not only train school-based teams, we also train bus drivers. We've identified a critical need in our district. The initial point of contact in the morning, in the last point of contact for students often are school bus drivers. So we provided a school-based, comprehensive team, the training that they needed, as well as the school bus drivers. I'll also add with our MANT training, it was important to not only equip staff with the skills that they needed, but we wanted to cultivate a climate and culture that supported psychological and emotional safety. As it relates to the funding for Birmingham City Schools, the appropriation was very necessary and helpful. Because based on the funding that the state of Alabama provides for our counselors, when we receive a count of two hundred and forty-nine or below, as it relates to the number of students, the funding from the state is only point five. So the other point five is given from the appropriation from the city of Birmingham that has allowed us to not only have just that half a unit. We didn't have to split those units between different schools. So the other point five was the funding that we received from the appropriation, allowing every school to have a full FTE for that counselor. The amount of five hundred or more was the amount that is given from the state of Alabama that gave a full unit. So as it related to elementary or the middle school, based on that range, they only earned point five oh. So for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the funding was able to support twenty of the half units that we would not have otherwise had. And that total cost, along with the fringe benefits, was six hundred and fifty-four thousand. Along with instructional supplies of thirty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars. The MANT training, as Dr. Bigum had already explained, including bus drivers, was fifty-four thousand six oh four. The grand total was a little over a million, at a million eleven thousand seven hundred and three dollars. Now, this is just a projection for the upcoming year. Usually by now, we know how much we've earned as it relates to the number of students based on the funding that the state provides. So for this upcoming year, instead of the twenty point five, we'll actually have twenty-one units. And so the grand total will be ten and a half units that will possibly need to fund the schools so that they can have a full counselor at every school.
So we use an aligned method for multi-tiered systems of supports for all of our students. And if you look under the umbrella, you see many of the programs that we use to assist our students socially, emotionally, and academically. We use Rethink Ed, which is for social, emotional support. We use ThriveWay Peer Helper Program, which provides lessons to students on conflict resolution, character development, suicide, suicide prevention, bullying, and sexual abuse. We have positive behavior intervention and supports. We also have our, which is part of our MTSS team. For this particular model, think of a hospital, for example. If you go to the ER, that nurse that sees you first is the triage person. That's what our school counselors are. Our school counselors are the first responders to all things that relate to the student. Therefore, if that counselor sees that student in the morning and they notice that there is an issue, they're the ones that provide the initial support for that student, with the exception of mental health services. Because we are school counselors, not mental health professionals. In that regard, we then take all of the supports that we provide as school counselors to students in the classroom, and then we progress up our chart. The teaching, learning, quality teaching and learning model, as you see implemented here, shows the services that we provide to all students, some students, and few students. And as you go up the pyramid, you will see that those students that are at the very top of the pyramid are our students who require the most supports. Those are the students who have been referred to our prevention specialists by the school counselor, to our psychologists, educational psychologists, our social workers, as well as any mental health providers that we have that come in to provide services for our students. The twenty-two, twenty-three school counselor to student ratio recommendations as provided by our, the national model, which is the American School Counseling Association, or ASCA, provides two hundred fifty to one, two hundred fifty students to one counselor. The national average is three hundred eighty-five to one, and then our state average is three hundred eighty-nine to one. Thanks to the city of Birmingham and this million dollars, we are below the state average as well as the national average, providing three forty-nine to one. And I would have to say that without that one million dollars, we would not be able to provide the supports that we are able to provide at each individual school. The school counselors provide a systematic program K through twelve, guidance curriculum to all students that includes large group counseling sessions, small group counseling sessions, whether that's grief, divorce, or anything that counselors or teachers see that students are experiencing, as well as providing responsive services to students and parents, and additional supports. The number of suicide risk assessments that we have had submitted this year has decreased in large because of the implementation of our Rethink Ed curriculum, as well as our ThriveWay Peer Helper curriculum. The year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had ninety-three suicide risk assessments submitted by school counselors. And those are assessments that the counselor sits down with that student. If they present as suicidal, or they say anything that they want to harm themselves, there's a risk assessment that the school counselors are required to do with those students. They turn that, they have a conversation with the parents about that. Some students are then referred to seek Perk, to go to Perk for additional support. And then those risk assessments are submitted to myself, Dr. Bigum, and our mental health coordinator for the district, for us to assess to see which students need additional supports. When this was submitted, there were sixty-three for this school year. And as of this point, as of yesterday, we are now at seventy-eight for the number of suicide risk assessments for students. Our crisis response team, as you can imagine and you're aware, that we have several students who are impacted due to the violence in our community. During the year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had seventeen student deaths. Myself, along with Dr. Bigum, helped comprise a team that goes to those schools to provide support for the students, emotional support and grief counseling for those students who are experiencing any type of anxiety or any emotion from the loss. Twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had seven students and two faculty members. And just last week, we had a team to go out to one of our elementary schools to meet with a third grade class from one of our eight-year-olds that was shot on Mother's Day. So we had a team to go to those, to that school two days to provide support. So it's not always a death of a student that we provide a team, and that team consists of several of the school counselors. Myself, Dr. Bigum, the mental health coordinator, prevention specialist, social workers. But it consists of the school counselors who then come in to help triage and help those students. From that crisis response, we triage each student, and then we decide based on the needs of each individual student if there's additional follow-up required for each student to seek additional supports.
Dr. Lewis has already outlined the makeup of our social, emotional learning department. We are a small team of mental health clinicians. We know that therapy one time a week is not a magic pill. Any type of mental illness is with you every day. We want to make sure in our department that we're providing those comprehensive services, but we rely heavily upon school counselors who are with students every single day. The school counselors triage, identify those students, and they make referrals to our office. If we identify that a student needs a more intensive level of support, we do partner with our mental health agencies. Our numbers have changed. Right now, we are at two hundred referrals to our SEL office. We've also made a hundred and fifteen referrals for mental health therapy. When we look at the reasons for referrals, I think it's really important to talk about those adverse childhood experiences. Many individuals refer to those as ACES. We know what our children are facing, and you see it in these reasons for referral. We've had an uptick in suicidal ideations, self-harming behaviors, such as cutting or burning your skin, and just thoughts of wanting to harm themselves after the COVID-19 pandemic. And so we know that that continues. In the two thousand twenty-one Surgeon General Report, the researchers highlighted the negative impacts of not only the pandemic, but what our children are dealing with, and also those adverse childhood experiences, how that's impacted during their life trajectory. So we know that it's critical to intervene early, intervene often. Thankfully, with the funding, we have mental health clinicians as first responders with school counselors who are there every day with students. But we're also able to provide a higher level of intensive services. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Smith.
So, and I think this is a general question, not just for Dr. Sullivan, but maybe the mayor's office. So I want you to know how we got here. So this came before Budget and Finance Committee. And Mayor Woodfinn told us that this right here, the submission, it was only for eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And he said one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is going to be removed from this program and given to page files. So the three of us were kind of like, well, why do we need to remove one hundred fifteen thousand dollars for this program, knowing that the kids need this? What was the rationale behind that? And wouldn't it be used better for more schools? Because I saw a few schools missing, like Washington K three is in my district and is missing.
So I can't speak for things, discussions that I haven't been involved in, but what I can say is this. For us as a school system, we are appreciative of anything that you provide, whether it be eight hundred thousand. We will take that and budget that based on the needs of our students, whether it's five hundred thousand. So we're here to say thank you for how much you do provide. What I can say is that we have a multiplicity of issues in our school system. We have mental health issues which are glaring. We also have academic issues. You know, we, most recently, we had an increase in our third grade literacy. Last year, we were at fifty-three percent of our third graders reading on grade level. Now we're at eighty-one percent. You know, that was a community-wide effort. So for me to say that, you know, the mental health part is important, but also the reading part is important. So the city council and the mayor's office want to provide eight hundred thousand dollars for mental health, an additional amount for reading. Our position is, thank you, because that's eight hundred thousand that we didn't have, or a million, or what'd you say, a hundred fifteen thousand that we didn't have for literacy. So from my perspective, we are grateful for whatever the council provides. Now, anything beyond that, I'm not, I wouldn't be able to, to address, other than we received these funds. We said this is going to be the best way to provide supports for our students, because clearly based on the data, there's a need there. But there's also an academic need too. And there's a, you know, there's a mental health need, there's an academic need, there's social needs, there are community needs that students have. So it's, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but our position is that anything that you can provide us, we're happy to have.
I don't think it did. Well, I guess my, just let me, no, I, I guess maybe, I guess, okay, I'm talking to y'all too. I'm trying to figure out, okay, you guys used a million dollars to do all of this. What kind of detrimental effect will this have on this program if we take away one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars?
So one of the things I can say is, we have seen that having a counselor in every school, and you mentioned Washington K, well, Washington K already had a full-time counselor.
Okay, good.
But we had many schools who did not. And when we received the million dollars, we thought, what is going to give us the biggest bang for the buck and spread a wide net to catch as many students who maybe have mental health issues? And what we said was the school counselor, the school counselor is that first line of dissent, defense. That counselor is one, whether, if a child is having an issue in the classroom, the principal sends them to the counselor. The counselor then determines whether this is a behavioral issue, mental health issue, and then they refer, if it's a behavior issue, refer it to the parent or the principal. If it's a mental health issue, they refer it to our mental health department. So that was what we, we decided to do. And then as far as whether that would be a detriment, we're going to find, we're going to pull money out of our general fund, because we clearly know that this works. So our goal is to ensure that all of our schools have counselors. The school, city council has provided a million dollars to help that, and you, you saw on the budget, you know, even with that, we're still over uh, that amount. I think it was one point, one point one million to provide those additional counselors. So if the city council did not provide the additional one hundred fifteen thousand, we would pull that money out of our general fund, because we know the importance of that. So even with the hundred, with eight hundred thousand, that's more than what we would have otherwise.
Can, can I ask your question a different way?
Yes.
So Ryan, I think what we need to know is, is there was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that was set aside for the Page Pals program um, to entice retired educators to participate in that program. Um, we, we don't know if that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was fully expended, or to what extent, extent, you know, that, that funding was expended. So um, perhaps there's some portion of that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that could be, you know, returned to, for this purpose. Um, and, and alternatively, I would say that, you know, we can amend this item and um, make it reflect, you know, for example, an amount up not to exceed a million dollars, um, so that whatever remaining balance of that hundred and fifteen thousand could potentially go back towards this purpose.
No, I don't want to move any money. I, 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 no. I'd rather us find money somewhere else than to take money from mental health. Like, I have a nephew in the school system, okay? I'm not a parent, but I'm an aunt, so I see these kids, they need this. They are losing friends left and right. I mean, violence was bad when we all were in school, but it just seems like someone's dying every week, and they need that support, because Dr. Sullivan, they can't take a test if they're depressed. They can't take a test if they're sad, like, and I-
Clearly, I, I know that, clearly.
Yeah.
There are kids who live lives that most people couldn't even imagine on their worst day. And this is what they live every single day. I'm fully aware of what we, the kind of relation, what kind of issues that our students bring to the table, and you're right.
Yeah, and, you know, I just, even though I was way younger, I remember going to the schools and smelling weed on kids' jackets, like, I, no, I, no, no. And the fact that it's been spent it without it coming to the council first is disrespectful. There's some stuff, you know, like, I'll let it slide, but not, not this. This isn't fair to the council at all, it really isn't. But, you know, I, I may be different, but I just don't agree with this, I really don't. Because what if we do this and they need the money? Or maybe they need the money from the general fund for something else, so I don't agree with it.
So, did you understand my suggestion? My suggestion, so the amount, I think, was originally a million dollars, and there was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that was separated to, you know, entice educators again to participate in the Page Pals program. We don't know if that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was expended. So I'm suggesting that if it wasn't expended, or if, you know, whatever portion of it wasn't expended, could be added back to this eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, you know, to potentially increase it.
Because I know you, I'm not going to take offense about that, but no, that shouldn't have been moved at all. That, that, I'm, you, Council President, I'm talking about him moving it without telling us. That's not, that's not good, because now we're saying this is supposed to be a million dollars in a line item, and the mayor moved it without telling the council. We're supposed to vote on that. You can't just move money just because you want to. It has nothing against the mayor personally, you can't do that. It's, it's not right, that's disrespectful. It really is. I don't know if anybody else feels like that, but that's disrespectful.
President Alexander.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, Counselor Smith is our chair of Budget and Finance. I know this was very concerning to us when the item came before us at Budget and Finance meeting. And we, I believe all three of us agreed that um, we had questions, Mr. President, about why that money was moved and um, was not allocated as the way that we thought it would be allocated, and as was in the line item. Now, your suggestion of that we could take this submission sheet and change it, we're still working with the original resolution number eighteen forty-two dash twenty-two. It already has the wording and an amount not to exceed a million dollars. So we're already working on a document that has that information in it, but we're back to, I know it says not to exceed one million dollars, but I feel like I can say for each counselor, our intent was, when we approved that particular line item, was that a million dollars would go to the school system in the way that we thought it would as far as mental health awareness. I, I fully understand what people have encountered. I think you all saw during the Page Pal process, it was more than about reading, if, if I'm being correct, and it was that understanding, and perhaps um, that's where the thought was, let's put more into Page Pals. But I'm in total agreement with, uh, reading pal, what am I calling, Page Pals?
Page Pal.
Page Pal? And um, but I, I feel that we were strongly within our uh, Budget and Finance meeting, just a question of this. And so our questions, I feel, should be directed back to administration, because they're getting the, the money that you're accepting and you're very grateful to have. But we are here to say that we would like to see that original, or just trying to get information. So what, for me, what you provided for us this afternoon, is you have given us a good idea of what those dollars, the use, the usefulness of those dollars, and how important they are. And um, so I think it's something we should continue that conversation. Do y'all agree or disagree? Is that what you're thinking, Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, um, Madam Pro Sam, and it wasn't for y'all, and thank you for coming for this update, because we, I know, I have personally been wondering how, how it was going, right? And I'm really excited to see all of this now, because I think that's great. You sent a support team for the third graders when they lost a classmate. Because otherwise, they just kind of tell the kids, just, you know, we acknowledge that you lost a classmate and that's it. And congratulations on the reading scores, because that's, that's huge, that really is, so thank you.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate knowing what's going on, you know, because a lot of times we don't. But, you know, one of the things I thought with this money that went to Page Pals, when a person, a child gets held back, that causes mental anguish, because you are forever branded for the rest of your life as the kid who flunked the grade. And, and that's, I mean, I know people that are adults that are still disturbed by that happening to them, you know, because they didn't, in some cases, didn't understand why, they thought they were going to be okay, and they weren't, so. But, but I do agree that the money shouldn't be moved without the council's knowledge, and that doesn't have anything to do with y'all, that kind of has something to do with us. And we just need answers. You know, we have plenty of money to do all kinds of funky things, and we should be able to do serious things too with the funding that we have. I mean, we, we routinely have a surplus, and so if we routinely have a surplus, we could actually use it for something serious that affects our residents. You know, I'm all about the residents. I may have lots of other faults, like being nitpicky about words, but by golly, the residents are the ones that deserve our attention, not just for entertainment, but for serious things. So we just need to find out how this happened, and then undo it, and then fix it. And everybody will go off singing a happy tune.
President Alexander.
I know we're continuing to talk about the money, and I think we've all agreed, some of that question needs, what that question needs to go to administration. I do want to ask about the deployment and the use of different things in your mental health toolbox. I was under the understanding that we also were, or either you all had funding, or we were providing funding within this package. What are you, what is your use of social workers? Or is this still the counselor? Or, or how are they deployed in the school system, or are they?
Yes, uh, you want to talk about social workers and mental health supports?
So in the SEL department, we have prevention specialists. They are licensed counselors, or they're licensed social workers. We also now have licensed social workers, and we have school psychologists. So we are receiving our referrals from school counselors, and we go in and provide those weekly individual therapeutic sessions for students. If the need arises, if there's a more intense need, we do refer out to our mental health agencies.
Okay, so we couldn't say that there's a, there isn't a social worker in every school?
No, we are a very small team, and so that's why we rely on the school counselors for the daily support.
Okay.
That's why it was important to have one at every school. Before this million dollars, we had school counselors that would only be at the school for two days a week, not at the school two days a week. Well, the days that this counselor's not there, kids are still having no, like, issues.
Well, I am glad that you have made that commitment, because I know when I served on the school board, it was that case. Um, often you'd have traveling school counselors, or you'd have a half here and a half there, so. Thank you, very happy to hear that.
Um, question about the referrals, so um, who, I mean, how, how many cases do you have to refer out to the mental health agencies that?
Right now, we are at a hundred and fifteen students that are actively seeing therapists. Our agencies actually provide services within the school. We know that transportation can be a barrier to receiving mental health services. So through our mental health coordinator, we systematically play students with those agencies, and they come to the school. Given the nature of the referral, there are some students who actually go to the office to see a therapist, that could be anything from a history of sexual abuse, or extreme cutting, or suicidal ideations.
So who picks up the tab for that?
We do.
Okay, that's coming out of your general fund?
Yes.
Okay. And, and give me, um, you may not know this off the top of your head, but what's the approximate dollar value of that?
We have multiple agencies that we've worked with, and depending upon the agencies, it depends upon the, the amount. Uh, I will say this, we have some of our students who are special education students who are in full-time day treatments, and they, they never leave the facility, and some of those calls are closer to being hours.
Okay, Counsel Williams, you had a question? Uh, Counsel Woods.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think one thing that stood out was just the, the, kind of, I guess, the number of crises that the uh, students are dealing with. If you could talk a little bit about, kind of, when that response team goes out, um, I guess just that process of maybe of, of getting back to, you know, what normal is or new normal, and kind of what that looks like, uh, playing out in real time?
So I'll, I'll ask uh, Dr. Lewis to come up, but um, you saw on the slide, we lost seventeen students last year to gun violence, right? We've lost seven students this year. And that doesn't count the student at Smith walking home, middle schooler, got shot, and he's paralyzed. Or the young lady who was shot during Mother's Day in the face, and she's nine years old. Living in that type of environment affects you in ways that you can't even imagine. And so one of the things that we want to do is also, while providing that mental health support for students, letting them know this is not normal. This is not how people are supposed to live, you know? And unfortunately, what we're seeing, um, there was a situation two years ago where a young lady, um, ninth grader, we known of, uh, name of the school, one of our schools was, 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 unfortunately, she was killed. And um, just, you're starting to see apathy among students, because this is becoming to be normal. And one of the things that we do in addition to providing those mental health supports, is through our social emotional learning department, through rethink ed, saying that this is not normal behavior. It should be not, should not be normalized, and kids have to see that this is wrong, and this is something that we need to, sorry, it's just, I, I, I've been to most of those funerals, and it can be quite emotional, but I'm going to ask Dr. Lewis if she could come up and talk a little bit about the, the, the team and what they do.
So the team all starts with a phone call or a text, or me seeing um, the news, uh, breaking news about a student that has, or an individual that's been shot. And of course, that sends me into, um, puts me in motion to reach out to Dr. Sullivan, our instructional superintendent, the principals of those neighborhoods, to find out, is this one of our students? Because at that point, then I have to mobilize the team, which includes myself, and preparing a statement based only on facts, where we go into those classes of that particular student, and follow that student's schedule the entire day, especially for high school students, because they go to different teachers. Um, but there's a statement that each individual on that crisis response team reads at the same time. Um, it's done systematically, it's done only based on facts. There's no opinions, there's no feelings in it, and so I will state this, it's, it's, it's based on our national model for the prepare model, and that's the name of it, prepare. Um, so we use that model to go into our classes and provide those supports to students. What we noticed the very first year, twenty-one, twenty-two, there was no emotion. And that was coming out of COVID, which is quite concerning. We're now seeing that students not only respond to anger, aggression, they're now responding to the fact that there was a classmate shot, or there was a student at an elementary school that was shot. Can I go outside to play? So those are all of the things that our students are dealing with on a day-to-day basis. Um, is it safe for me to sit on my front porch? So the school counselors are there to provide that day-to-day support for students that's not needing therapy, because again, we are school counselors, we are not therapists. We leave that to our SEL department to, to handle. So once that team is mobilized, um, and it always consists of a team lead or two, depending on how many schools are impacted, we have had up to two teams mobilizing to different locations on some days, um, based on the events that happen. But that team consists of the team lead, um, a prevention specialist or two, or three, a social worker, and up to seven or eight counselors. And the counselors or that team reports to that individual site that morning. They don't go to their school first, they go to that particular site, because we all know, we go to a school, go to school, we get stuck and we can't leave. And our most important thing is providing support for those students on that day when they enter the classroom, to be able to answer any questions or any concerns that they have.
And also, we provide supports for the families, because the council, there's a, there's a victims relief.
Alabama crime victims.
Are not able to bear their children, so there's a.
Alabama crime victims, a, a compensation application is given to each of our parents who lose a student due to gun violence. The school counselor sits down with that parent to help them complete that form. Um, there are lots of layers that go with that, but the school counselor provides supports for the parents as they're navigating through a very difficult time of not being able to think really about what needs to happen. And then at that point, they give that information to the funeral home, and they proceed from there.
No, I really appreciate y'all including that. I think, um, you know, I kind of can feel the, the passion from the Budget and Finance uh, committee, because I think, you know, it's kind of one of those community things, like, if we can't get the young people launched, you know, out of school whole, you know, then it's kind of, you're, you're setting, setting it up for a difficult um, challenge road ahead, and that's going to, you know, those issues stay in the community. And so it's almost, you know, where are the areas we can invest early to see it? You know, because we're dealing with a short-term issue, but we're also dealing, we got to play the long game as well, and so I, I appreciate y'all really including that, putting that on the forefront, so that, uh, you know, we can see that and see what's impactful as we work to kind of get into a situation where we're not dealing with so many crises, where you're not having a response. to kind of get into a situation where we're not dealing with so many crises, where you're not having to respond as frequently. And so, I appreciate that. But it's just kind of one of those holistic things where, uh, we got a role to play. Y'all have a role to play. Other partners have a role to play, and it's just identifying, you know, what action is needed, and then how much it costs, and just figuring out how to marry those two up. So, thank you.
Did you have another question, Counsel Williams?
More of a comment, really. You know, I wish that we lived in a world where your jobs were not necessary. Obviously, that's not the case. We, we live here in reality. And um, I just wanted to, uh, you know, thank you guys for what y'all do, from Dr. Sullivan to obviously your team that deals with, um, has a job description that, that takes an emotional toll on each one of you. And I think, as Counsel Woods just said, I, I think that that, uh, emotional toll, um, can be felt your comments and in y'all's presentation today. So, thank you very much. It, it seems, I'm speaking for myself, but it seems obvious that this money is being well-spent, and that it's an area where there's obviously a need. So, uh, thank y'all for what you do, and uh, it's really nice to see, you know, a lot, we allocate a lot of money. And as you heard from the first thirty minutes of this meeting, sometimes I think the money's a little bit wasteful. But it's, it's really nice to see, um, when money is allocated, and you, and you can, you get the feeling that it's making a difference in the community in which, um, you know, our taxpayers live, send their children to school and work. So, thank you all for what you do.
Yeah, I want to echo that, and um, Dr. Sullivan, I assume that um, as part of BCS, um, benefits package, that employees also have access to mental health services. And, you know, um, married to a, an educator as well, and she taught preschool for a number of years, sixteen, you know, uh, four, four-year-olds is a bit to handle. It eventually burned her out. So, she might have benefited from, you know, having some access to some services like that. But anyway, tell us about.
So, secondary trauma is real, uh, you know, even though teachers may not live in the communities that the students live in, but kids coming in with the stories of what they're dealing with, not just with the violence, but just in their day-to-day lives can impact students. So, we've actually expanded our employee assistance program. Before the pandemic, um, Mrs. Alexander will know we had one person, Ms. Williams, she's actually retiring. So, we've expanded that to have some contracted services, that's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, where our employees can call, uh, get an appointment, and really process some of the things that they deal with, you know, at school and, and, and at home. And so, it, it's important. After the pandemic, we saw, uh, issues, not just with students, but with employees. And I see, think that people see that across the nation. And I think it's incumbent upon us, if we have the, uh, the, the wherewithal, we need to make sure that we're putting conditions in place so our employees feel good, feel healthy, so that when they go and face the issues that they face every day, that they can do that with the right spirit, and ensure that our students have a place where they can come, and they have people who have grounded themselves, because they've gotten help themselves. And what that does is also, you know, there's a, um, we talk about mental health, and there's still some stigma attached to that. But I think that by providing these services to the adults that students are engaged with, it takes away some of that stigma as well.
Definitely. Okay, um, how would the council like to proceed?
Mr. President, I, I really want to change this submission sheet, because it doesn't reflect what the resolution says. I think you said that earlier, but I will feel very, very comfortable if we did that.
Okay, so, you're making a motion that we-
I make a motion to amend the submission sheet submitted to the committee whole from, uh, an amount not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-five thousand to not to exceed one million, as reflected in the resolution number eighteen forty-two dash twenty-two.
Okay, the second?
Second.
All right, so it's been motioned second, any discussion? Now, we're ready for the bed, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? That item passes, so the motion passes.
If I could just say one thing, I do appreciate so much what y'all do. When I was in middle school, three boys in my class were murdered, and the adults said nothing, silence. Just pretended like it didn't happen. You know, three kids suddenly disappeared, and nothing was said. So, the fact that we have a network of people to help children with what they're dealing with is pretty wonderful. And I commend you, because I know it's, it's got to be tough, it's got to be tough. But thank you for being here today. You've provided us with some good news, some, some heartening news, so thank you. Thanks.
Okay, so, counselors, we've amended the, the item now, um.
Counsel, Mr. President, I'd like to make a, I'd like to move that we move this item to the full council for consideration.
Second.
As amended.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any objections? That motion passes, so this will go to full council for consideration. Thank you all. All right, Counsel Williams?
Motion to have Valerie relook at the curtains.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.